Council, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Raynor Horse?
Here.
Deanshaw?
Here.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Here.
Spore?
Here.
Could I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeYoungshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, anyone wishing to address council regarding anything that's on tonight's agenda, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Landos Link, 116 Sunset Drive, Iowa. I'd like to open with prayer. Please pray with me. Father God, I first of all, in Jesus' name, want to thank you for raising up special people to lead this city. Thank you, Lord, for the way you have blessed this city that you placed us, like a city on a shining hill. Help us, Lord, to follow your desires and your will, and help us to be that city and that example to others in the area and throughout the world. Pray especially blessed Ivan, the mayor, on each member here, and I pray for Psalm 3:3, that you, O Lord, are the shield about them. Pray for your guidance for tonight. Again, pray for a special wisdom and a special, special blessing on each one, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Leonard. Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion or get a motion for approval of the consented agenda.
So moved.
Spore?
DeYoung, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we're moving into a public hearing regarding public right-of-way vacation in a portion of Hazel Street. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, tonight's public hearing concerns proposed vacation of Hazel Street. Now, this would be the Hazel Street section, that is what we commonly refer to as paper right-of-way. That would be north of East Park Lane. So what we have here is East Park Lane is right here. The area that we're proposing to vacate as far as public right-of-way is this yellow highlighted area north of, north of East Park Lane. Now, it was very important to understand earlier this year, or earlier last year, excuse me, last year, the city council approved a development agreement for the Timberview Development. It's approximately 36 housing units. As a part of the development agreement, the developers required to rebuild Hazel Street or build Hazel Street and dedicate it to the city of Pella. The Hazel Street alignment has a different alignment than the right-of-way that we currently have here dedicated. The Hazel Street alignment will come up and then go northwesterly over to Main Street as opposed to straight due north. So when we look at this right-of-way, what we're proposing is that the proposed vacation of the existing right-of-way in the Timberview Development with the knowledge that the developers required to dedicate Hazel Street to the city of Pella once the road is constructed. It is important to note, Mr. Mayor, the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this vacation request after December 13th meeting. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Do we have the right-of-way north of that yet, too?
We believe there's right-of-way, there could be possibly right-of-way, but what we've chosen to do is do it incrementally as council approves development plans.
Okay. And then, this is more of a comment than a question. I've had a couple of people ask me why we had the right-of-way in the first place and talked to an older gentleman that used to be the entrance into Graceland. So you went all the way down there and then you hit Graceland Cemetery from that side, which explains for the, you know, that's why you have such a long entrance now, the way it is now, but it used to be right there when you went from that side.
Our resident historian enlightens us again.
Came from my second cousin twice removed, to be clear, 87 years old.
Okay. Any member of the audience have a comment about this? You can do it. If you do, you can do it from there. You don't have to come forward.
Is this going to be paved, then?
Well, it's part of the, it's part of the development, yes. I, well, it kind of angles. I think it goes there and kind of angles back for future.
Is this more for utilities, then?
This is, what we're proposing this evening is the vacation of the right-of-way that's already established, and the reason is, is when the developer comes back in Dulce Street, they're going to dedicate a paved street that meets city standards to the city of Pella. That has a different alignment than the right-of-way that's identified up here, so we're vacating it with anticipation that the developer will be dedicating back the street, a fully completed street, to the city later this year.
I can't get this little gun that's in here. This is very confusing. So thank you for coming by.
Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now we move on to ordinance number 1025 entitled an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way in a portion of Hazel Street located in the southeast quarter of Section 34 and the southwest quarter of Section 35 and township 77 north, range 18 west of the 5th Principal Meridian in the city of Pella. This is the first reading. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
Place on first reading.
DeYoung?
Spore.
Hopkins, any discussion?
Was there any opposition at the, I know the P&amp;Z voted unanimously for, did anybody come to the P&amp;Z to protest it?
Nobody gave a protest.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'm going to move that we set aside the rules and waive the second and third readings of this ordinance.
Spore.
So, Vance, Struh, and Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll give a motion to adopt.
Spore. Okay, Vance, Struh, Hopkins, a motion to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6540 entitled Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposal to Convey Real Property by Quick Claim deed to Pella Tim Review LLC and Provide for Publication of Notes Thereof. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board and also for those at home watching on Pella Fiber as well. And as Mayor DuPont stated, what this resolution simply does is establishes February 21st is the public hearing date regarding the proposal to convey property to Pella Tim Review LLC by quick claim deed. Now, it's important to note, the property that is being proposed to be conveyed over to the developer is the yellow highlighted area that we just vacated the right-of-way on. The proposed vacation or the proposed conveyance, rather, will be in accordance with city policy. Traditionally, we have sold property to the budding property owners. Once the right-of-way is vacated for 50 cents per square foot, those will be the sale terms on February 21st, Mr. Mayor. So again, the key takeaway is all we're simply doing is establishing February 21st as the public hearing date for this matter. With that, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone? Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6541 entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a First Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development Buying Between the City of Pella and RDP Holdings LLC. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor DuPont stated, what we're proposing or what's being proposed this evening is the First Amendment to our development agreement with RDP Holdings. It is important to note, the terms that we're discussing this evening are the same terms that were discussed with council on December 6th. Now, a little bit of background on this, in September of 2021, council initially approved this agreement, which is commonly referred to as a prior ridge commercial development agreement. As a part of this development, the entities that are currently located in this development are the new Smash Park as well as the new Chick-fil-A on this as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the two items that we are talking about this evening, what's being proposed is a two-year extension to install an outdoor miniature golf course for Smash Park. And the reason for this is the power lines that you see that are directly in back of Smash Park or to the north of Smash Park. Smash Park is located right over here. Mid-American Energy is actually planning on relocating that transmission line to the public right-of-way. So in 2024, hopefully those lines will no longer be on the property and the developer will have a little bit more flexibility in planning the outdoor miniature golf course. And so that's the first proposal is just simply to grant a two-year extension to install the outdoor miniature golf course with this key item here as Mid-American's planning on moving this transmission line. Once the line is moved, the developer can adequately plan for the miniature golf course. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. The second item that we have is the developer proposing to remove their requirement to build sand volleyball courts at the Smash Park. And the reason for this is they are planning on soliciting public input on future amenities. Some of the options that they've talked about is possibly constructing matting cages or additional outdoor pickleball courts. In summary, Mr. Mayor, this is the same terms that we discussed with council on December 6th. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution and development agreement as presented this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Brandon Horace DeYoung, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6542 entitled Resolution Approving Ordering the Preparation of Plans and Specifications Form of Contract, Notice of Hearing and Notice of Letting Setting Date for Public Hearing Authorizing the Taking of Bids and Authorizing Bid Opening for the Monroe Street Improvements. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. The key takeaway this evening is what we're really doing with this resolution is we're approving March 7th is the public hearing date for this proposed construction project, and you're also giving staff authorization to seek bids for the Monroe Street reconstruction project. And basically, what this project involves is upgrading the red highlighted area on Monroe Street. Oakwood Drive is located over here, West Third Street is here, the Oakwood subdivision is located right down here. So approximately, this involves upgrading a gravel road of approximately 300 linear feet when instead it will be a regular city street or urban cross-section. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Again, the key takeaway is, is the schedule on this, if council were to approve this resolution, we hold a bid letting on the project on February 22nd. Hopefully, we'll have a contract to present to council on March 7th. Council were to approve that construction contract, we would proceed with the project and issue notice to proceed to the contractor on May 3rd. And again, keep in mind, when we talk about construction projects, these are working days, and inclement weather can affect the working days on it as well. Now, finally, the last material item on this is the opinion of probable cost for this item is just below $176,000. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion?
I...
Looks to me like a row of trees is going to get...
No, not so much. They're, they're down below us, and while they're putting a two-foot shoulder out from the curb and then going back down to try to keep the tree alive, so.
Danny, how many more gravel roads do we have inside city limits, not including alleys?
Well, first one we'd have prior under contract.
Yes.
And then this one, and then Park Lane to the east of A-18.
That's right, okay. Well, so we're, we're gaining...
And a little bit of 218th, that's already ours, that's not PCC.
Okay, that's good news.
We're getting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Will this have sidewalks?
No, it does not. The natural place where to go is on the south, and there's a lot of electric in the way, there's trenches in the way, and we decided not to make that a right-of-way car project at this point in time. So...
Is that not included in the city cross-section typically, Mike?
We have lots, though, I mean, that's, there's no hard pass rule on that, you know?
I think as far as the, the development with this is, we're treating as an existing neighborhood and the streets going in, and staff's made a decision at this point that sidewalks would not be included. That could always be changed by council, but I think in this case, Danny, there's some instructions in the way that would add cost to the project.
Absolutely.
It's a fair statement.
The subdivision, the lot lines don't line up either, and there's junk in there, so why did that happen? I can't explain.
On Monroe Street, there's no sidewalk all the way to Broadway, yeah.
Well, that's kind of my point is, all the time, there's, look out, we go, and there's a lot of kiddos out there on that side. Is there sidewalk access for those families out the south on, is that Washington that comes out on?
Yes, both streets have sidewalks going to the south.
So they have access to side, the kids have access to sidewalks out the south side?
Correct.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion for approval. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6543 entitled Resolution Approving Change Orders Number 7 and 8 to the construction contract with Excel Utility Contractors for the fiber to the home network construction project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. And we have a combined presentation. This item covers the change orders, both number 7 and 8 this evening on the agenda. It is important to note, when we're talking about the outside plant for Pella Fiber, we're talking about the outside fiber optic system that allows us to connect and provide intermittent service to the homes in Pella. In addition, the same network that we are talking about this evening will also allow us at some point in time to provide advanced meter infrastructure, commonly referred to as AMI, over for electric utility as well. A little bit of background on this project, council did award the project to Excel Utility Contractors on April 21st of 2020. Now, as far as the change orders we are considering this evening, change order number 7 is a materials adjustment. These are additional materials and field adjustments that were made in the field of Change order 8 is what's commonly referred to as a final reconciliation, and what we're doing is we're making a reconciliation between the final quantities that were actually placed in the ground versus what the contractor bid. In this amount, in this case, it's an additional $178,070.42. So, Mandy, let's go ahead to the contract summary, please. And a little bit of background on the contract, we started off with an original contract of just over $8.8 billion for this project. We subsequently made a change order, and then we'll be talking about an additional resolution this evening that removed the service line drops from the outside plant portion, so that was part of this reduction here. Now, if council were to approve these two change orders this evening, we'd be left with a revised contract of $7,955,698.80. It is important to note, by the time you make the revisions to the contract and look at just purely the outside portion of, of the, of the contract or the outside plant portion of the contract, we believe the final change orders for the project will be less than 3%, which is within industry standards for this type of project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, again, we have a combined presentation on this item, and that does conclude the staff presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6544 entitled Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for the Fiber to Home Network Construction Project. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Motion passed. Resolution number 6545 entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number 1 to the construction contract with Excel Utility Contractors for the outside drop service equipment and installation. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and as Mayor DuPont stated, this is change order number 1 to the, what's commonly referred to as the outside drop contract. Now, what this contract involved was installing 2,000 service lines for Pella Fiber customers. The service line is the line that connects the individual home to the outside plant for the project. And a little bit of background on this, in January of 2021, council approved the contract that we are considering this evening, or the change order that we are considering this evening, back to Excel Utility Contractors in January of 2021. Tonight's change order that we are considering is a, is a reduction in the quantities amount of $22,000, and we'll explain that here shortly. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the original contract for those 2,000 service drops, we started off with an original contract of $1,273,075.56. The change order that we're considering this evening is a deduction in the contract of $22,000. The deduction is, is there is a, a few of the service line drops that we found that were not placed at the appropriate depth, they're still serviceable, but this is the contractor's reduction in their contract to make up for any possible modifications that we may have to in the future. So that $22,000, once again, is the deduction. Council were to approve this, we'd be left with a total revised contract of $1,251,075.56. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the change order, and we are recommending also approval, acceptance of the project as well this evening. So that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6546 entitled Resolution Accepting the Outside Drop Service Equipment and Installation. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore.
Brandon Horace, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horace?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1024 entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Conditionally Amending the Boundaries of the RR District to Include the property generally located along the north side of Hempstead Drive and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map, and this is the second reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bo Brown has submitted this rezoning application for a portion of a parcel that's up on the north side of Hempstead Drive. To orientate everyone, the rezoning that we're talking about this evening is a 6.63-acre parcel. Specifically, what's being proposed by Mr. Brown this evening is to rezone the parcel from A1 Ag to rural residential, rural residential similar to low-density residential city limits, except it's larger lot sizes on it as well. Now, the parcel that we're talking about, rezoning, is this red highlighted parcel. It is very important to note that this is a conditional rezoning that we are proposing this evening. The reason why it is a conditional rezoning in order to be compliant with the zoning code on this and the minimum lot sizes is the final plat needs to be approved, or what's being proposed is the final plat needs to be approved within 12 months of the date of this ordinance. And what the final plat would do is formally divide the property, the RR portion of the property from the A1 Ag portion of the property. The reason why we have to have this condition is in rezoning request. So under the zoning code, when you look at A1 Ag parcels such as this, the minimum lot size is 10 acres on it. So to comply with the zoning code, once again, we need to formally subdivide the property, and that has to be within twelve months of passage of this ordinance. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as a use standpoint, and considering changing the properties, a zoning classification from A-one ag to low-density or rural residential is important to note, when we look at other low-density residential developments, we believe they are in close proximity to the development. We have the Eagle Creek subdivision that's just located to the south. Highway T fifteen is over here, and the Boslonin Development is located just up to the northeast as well. So as far as low-density residential, there is property in the area. We do not believe, when we looked at this for spot zoning, we do not believe this request constitutes spot zoning. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan of the entire area that we are considering this evening was identified as A-one ag or rural residential. So for a future use land map standpoint, the comprehensive plan, we believe it does align with the city's comprehensive plan. Now, it is also important to note, the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this request after their November seventh meeting. And we are recommending approval of the ordinance, which approves a conditional rezoning for, for the property as presented. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the Council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore?
Hopkins, Spore, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynahorst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules in place on third and final reading.
Spore?
So Brandon Horst, Spore? Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynahorst?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. And a motion for approval to adopt ordinance number ten, twenty-four?
Put to adopt.
Spore?
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynahorst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Absacta Bills Number twenty-one, nineteen, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussions or questions?
Only had one. It's a small bill. I was curious. There's a bill we paid the city a bit in five hundred dollars for a TV ad.
That's a good question on here, and I'm happy to answer that question. What we have is with Pella Fiber that we're currently broadcasting this week council meeting, we also have the ability for local businesses to advertise, not only on our local access channel, but also on all forty cable network channels that we present. In order to do that, you have to have special equipment that you need to have it. And so what we had is a three-year contract with, we have with the city of Benton where we pay five hundred dollars a month. It advertises the cost and splits the cost equally between the parties. It allows us to provide advertising for local businesses in Pella. I'm happy to note, we got our first checks on advertising revenue for the utility today, too, and that was just over two thousand dollars in ad revenue. So, and I think it's a fair statement from city staff standpoint, that's what the five hundred dollars for the feed of the city of Benton. But we're also looking forward to the political season in two thousand and twenty-four elections for political ad revenues as well, and so.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynahorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Anybody, anyone on council have any other business we need to address this evening? I should have done this at the start of our meeting, but we have a small group of scouts here tonight looking in on a city council meeting, so welcome, guys. You, you hit a night when it's pretty short agendas, so sometimes we're here a lot longer. But thanks for coming. Hopefully, you learned a little, little something while you watched us tonight, so good to see you here. Okay, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address the council with? If so, please step forward with a microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dodi Boat, nine fifteen M, and this is today's register. And in there is a big article about how Urbendale is planning their new sports park. And they're having all kind of question and answer sessions in the, in the afternoon and in the evening, and then the public will get to vote on that. How come we have not been informed that way about the sports building that is going east of town that is costing millions of dollars, and so far, we don't have a vote on it? What's happened here?
Well, you, you said you didn't have a chance to have a discussion, which is not true. We had, we had a meeting last Wednesday night.
I was here. There was...
Invited the public.
There was no discussion. It was just a planned meeting with information.
Yeah, that's what it was, yes.
Yes. And if you wanted to write a comment, you could write it on this piece of paper. Whether it ever got looked at, I don't know. When are you gonna have your question and answer meetings? When are we gonna get to vote on it? We should be able to.
Well, we already...
It's big expenditure.
We already voted on it because we...
No, we didn't.
We were very clear when we voted to, or we proposed extending the local option sales tax.
That, so that's the local option tax. That has nothing to do with the building out east of town.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
It does, it does. We made no, we were very clear about the intended use of fifty percent of that tax.
I think you're, I think you're fooling the taxpayers.
Yeah, that's, that's your opinion.
That's my opinion, and it's a lot of the taxpayers' opinions.
We were very clear where that local option sales tax was going.
It was going, but that doesn't mean we get a vote...
No question.
That it's in, that we voted for it.
Yeah, we did vote for it. The community voted for it.
No, we didn't. No, we voted for the local option tax. We did not vote for the building.
It's intended use to pay for the building.
It's intended use to pay for the building, but we did not vote for the building. We voted for fiber. Any other major expense, we have had a special election for. And it's right in today's paper. All your taxpayers are gonna read it.
Thank you.
And they're not happy. Because we did not get to vote. We voted for the local option tax, which we have to share. We don't get the whole thing.
Anything else, Dodi?
No, no, I'd like you to read the article.
Oh, I saw it. In fact, I called the mayor of Urbendale the minute I saw it because he's a Pella boy.
And they've got forty thousand people, and we've got ten. So think about it.
And we have twelve million dollars pledged to the project, and they have zero.
Well...
Of private money, so.
Yeah, okay.
If you want us, if you want to compare projects, I think we're a little bit ahead. Anyone else?
Keith Oxbergen, two, two, four South Street. I want to expand on what Dodi said. We had discussions. The local option tax was discussed. Can you elaborate on that? I don't remember being in a discussion. Where were, what was this? Where was this?
You mean, what, prior to the vote? We had approval at a meeting to extend it, if that's what you're asking.
No, the public, you, you said the public was disgusted.
Yeah, it's, it was on our agenda, yes. Anything on our agenda is open for public discussion.
So that was the extent of the discussion for the rec center? That the local option tax would go towards the rec center? That was the extent of your discussion?
No, that was, no, that wasn't the discussion of the rec center. That was the discussion of the local option tax.
So, yeah, the discussion that the local option tax was going to the rec center. You just said that, Dodi.
Yeah, yeah.
What was this discussion again?
In fact, the group that had a concerted effort to try to stop the local option tax, in all of the propaganda I saw, they tied, they tied their opposition directly to the rec center. The sign said, no local option tax, no rec center. So you can't tell me there was any surprise.
I was asking what your discussion was. You said you discussed it.
We did. We, when we proposed extending the local option tax, we said fifty percent of it's gonna go to issue a seventeen million dollar bond.
How did you say that?
Just like I'm saying it now in English language, very clearly. Uh, I, we said that fifty percent of the local option tax was going to, for a seventeen million dollar bond to be spent on the rec center. The other fifty percent of the local option tax was going to infrastructure projects.
Okay.
Every, every meeting we had, every discussion had, that was our discussion.
So these discussions were only at the city council on your side?
They were at, at open city council meetings.
You didn't have anything other than that?
About the local option tax, you mean?
Of the local option tax being spent on the rec center. The only discussions the city had with the public were at council meetings, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, you bet. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eddy Cam. Hi, I'm Eddy Cam, and I have a couple things to say here. One thing I want to say is thank you for all of what you guys have done to make this town a great place to live in. And a question that I have is, all of them, all of, how much all of this costs, how are we going, how will this be paid for?
Or, or what, what is what paid for? Are you talking about the rec center?
Yeah, like, any, like, what, we've seen, like, like, the Pella Fiber and everything else, how, what will, what will pay for it, like taxes or?
I'll, I can talk about the financing for the projects you saw tonight.
I, yes, sir, on Pella Fiber, what we have is the user fees will pay for the telecommunications utility, so it's the monthly bill that people pay for their internet service, their phone service, and their television service, and that's what pays for, for the project.
Karma, excuse me, Karma Ruthven, three hundred West Fitz Street. I have three questions, and it's regarding the rec center. First, um, I was told at the meeting Wednesday night by one of the contractor guys, or whatever you call them, that it was gonna be like, so far, what was on the photos was gonna be like forty-two million dollars. That was what he said. So I and another lady, the lady says, well, we only have ten thousand people that live here. And I said, why do we need such an elaborate building? It's a nice building, but why can't we just have a simple building instead of, it looks like a cathedral or something? And he basically said, well, it was simple on the inside, I said, okay? But the question is, I know we've got some money raised through Pella Corp or whatever organization, but the other millions, is that coming through what, other than the taxes that you talked about?
We will, we will be having many more discussions about the financing.
Okay.
It will all be laid out.
Okay. Then my other question is, and this is probably too early, but who will be deciding in regards to if somebody wants to join the rec center? Do they have to join everything that's in there? Or would they kind of divide it up from just swimming, just maybe basketball, and just maybe exercise? Has that been discussed at all?
No.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
But it will, it will all be discussed in a public meeting, yes.
Okay.
Operations, finances, all of that will be discussed in a public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Mansker, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yep.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Raynahorst?
Yes.
Motion passed. We are adjourned.